So at this time, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Um, and I'm gonna ask each candidate. And we did a drawing, so, uh, Tana Fogel, did I say that correct? Tommy, okay. Uh, so if you would, and you have, each person has one minute to do your introduction. So Tana, if you can go first. I'm sorry. Okay.
Hi, I'm Tana Fogel. I'm another two, a grandmother of eleven, and a great-grandmother of four. And that is my proud moment. I am here as, um, representative, running for the first district. Um, like these ladies said, I love Lexington. I was born and raised here, Harrison Elementary, Lexington Junior, Lafayette, and the University of Kentucky. Uh, I am proud to be in this race. I wouldn't even have entered into this race, but the community pushed me into this race. And so, I took a poll, and at the end of that poll, folks said, "We really need you to run for this position." Um, I have been a community organizer all my life. I'm here to build relationships, I'm here to put a new face in City Hall, and I'm here to bring, and hopefully, connect the head to the heart.
Okay, thank you so much. But our, our next candidate is-
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Michael Wilson.
This is not part of my minute now. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Wilson, um, AKA Brother Mike, period, point blank. And, uh, it's extremely good to be here this afternoon, to be a part of this gathering, to meet and greet this group as one of the candidates for the Urban County Council First District. Uh, I do want you to know that it's been my honor and privilege to serve on the Urban County Council, as you will know by some cards and stuff, that experienced the eight years from eighty-five to ninety-three. And, uh, some good years, and there's some good people, and I thank God for that and the opportunity. And then, of course, um, my entire life has been a one of service, with fifty-one years of ministry, uh, with, uh, the time on council, and then starting at a very early age, involved with our community, and trying to do what I could for our community. I don't wanna waste my minute, but I do want to say to you, it's important that we all be concerned about our community. And I'm glad to hear these candidates say that, and I want you to know that mine goes just a little further back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Oh, no, no problem, no problem.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Doyle Warner.
Good evening, thanks for having us, for having, and hosting this event. My name is Doyle Warner, I'm a native, uh, east Jessup County, born in the rural, grew up in the rural. Did farming all my life. My education included West Jessup County, Kentucky State University, University of Kentucky, Transylvania University, and Simmons Bible College. I was called to preach in nineteen seventy-eight, that's been part of my life for the last forty-five years. I am married to my wife, who is sick tonight, and asked her to pray to her, uh, forty-five years, uh, with two, uh, children, two boys, and a grandson who keeps me going, and a granddaughter. Thanks again for having this event for us.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Rasam Barry.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Lex Trappus, obviously, for hosting this. Thank you, Tommy, thank you, Deborah, for doing this. I'm Rasam Barry. Uh, first of all, I'm a child of God, that's number one. Um, I am not a politician, I'm a community leader. I want to be your voice. I've served you already for the last twenty-five years as local law enforcement. And what I'm proud about is that I've gotten to work with all the kids in our community. It doesn't matter, race, poverty, nothing. But we are building bridges to help kids know that they can make a difference in our lives, in their lives as well. That's what's important to me. I've got an opportunity to make relationships and create different relationships, not only inside city government, but also outside city government. With priests and pastors and all those bits, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we're gonna have our next question, and the next question, and before you all answer your questions, we're gonna ask you to use your microphone, please. Uh, there are a few people taping, and so, we want everyone to be heard, so if you could, please, use your microphones. So your, the next question is gonna be for Mr. Michael Wilson.
Yes.
Um, why did you file or want to work for the first district as a council member? And again, if you could use your microphone.
Sure.
Wait, and one second. Okay, you have one minute or two to answer your questions, okay? How many minutes? Two minutes to answer.
Thank you. Um, why did I decide to file a run? Uh, that is because I wasn't finished. And I'll say that I wasn't finished because I had served in the Urban County from, uh, council from eighty-five to ninety-three. And thereby, um, I, I was forced to stop running for the first district because the open opportu, an open opportunity came for me for me to live on West Short Street in the historic home of our family, and that is outside of the first district. And so thereby, when my aunt decided to give me a, uh, two and fifty thousand dollar house for twenty thousand dollars, I decided I gotta move. Okay, so then, of course, I could not, and, uh, the, the expiration had taken place that I, that I wanted to, uh, that could change the district boundaries, and I didn't wanna do that for fear of diluting the vote. So I decided, okay, I gotta sit down. And so, there was a lot of work that I had done, and that a lot of work that I continued to do while not on the council. Uh, like, making, hearing the call that they wanted to demolish, um, Charles Young Center, George Brown called me, and we stood in the council arena and made sure that did not take place. And a number of other things, there's two, that were going on in our community. And so, then I am back to do what is necessary. I think that there's some things that we can do as a collective body. And one of the things that's really important to me at this point is that we form inside the first district, what it would be called the First District Neighborhood Council. We have a lot of strong neighborhood associations like, uh, Northside, and some, William Wells Brown, and some other situations. And we need to come together collectively, we need more organizations, so that, uh, when we think that things aren't happening, happening on the Northside, I mean, for us, we can come collectively as a group and say, hey, we want the things, same things and services, and, and the services that they're getting on the Southside.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Uh, next, um, Mr. Doyle Warner, did you need me to repeat the question?
Uh, no, thank you. I've always been involved in community from one fashion, form, or number. As said, been a ordained Baptist minister for forty-something years. Serving in the churches, the churches knowing what the community needed. One of the things that kind of propelled me was that, that I, I, I believe it needed to be a change in the council with a faith leader, someone that's not gonna be scared to say what they mean and mean what they say. And that's me. I've been involved in Lexington since seventy-six, seventy-seven. I was a Little League football coach. One of my proudest, uh, uh, players is Darrell Whitney. I think most of you know him, the attorney. And he said, "Coach Warner, if it was not for you, I wouldn't be where I am today." So, you know, with that in mind, that, 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 that fire just burns in me to want to try to make a change in the community. My theme is serving and saving our community.
Thank you. Rasam Barry, please.
Okay, um, first, like I said before, I love this community. Um, I've served you for the last twenty-five years, and I think it's important that I continue on serving. Um, publicly saying, one of the major things that we're facing right now, our kids are in trouble. And we need that voice to know the pulse of our community. I believe I've done that with mentoring programs, reading programs, getting out, talking to kids, showing them things that they need, and they have a, a different perspective on life. Also, affordable housing, I know the thing that was a big topic that we're doing right now. I'm a landlord, I believe in it. I give people opportunities to have a home to, that is affordable for them, so they can raise their families. That's what I do, because that is important. So as I continue to build bridges, not only in city government, but outside too, that we can come together and make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tanya?
Yes, um, so one of my main objectives is to listen to the community. Is to build relationships that are broken. To allow people who live on Market and Mill to see the people who live out Whinburne and Ohio Street. To make sure that when we say inclusive, that means we're including the whole first district. There are some things that I would love to do. Some of it is reopen these parks. Generate revenue so that we can get camp counselors back in the park. Go back to the old school where we played in the sandbox. Do you all remember, we didn't have all of that shooting and gang banging, because the youth had something to do. Reinvest in something that they used to call the mayor's training center, that we can call the community training center. And give people hope. When people are backed in a corner and they have lost hope, then your community dies out. And so, it is so important to let people know that we really do care, and then start to change some of the policies that is already in place. Micro-city government, one of the best feeding programs to give youth people, uh, a right to have jobs and hold jobs. So what do we do? We reinvent, we go back to the board, we erase what's up there, and we start from ground one. Ground zero, it has to happen. We have got to start talking and listening to each other. Reinvest money in places like the Power Program. We hear one Lex is outstanding, but they don't have enough money to harvest. So why is that? Why do we have this big disconnect from Broadway and Main Street, South Side to the North Side? When I get in office, we will change that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Okay, our next question, and Mr. Doyle, you'll go first on this one. What are your greatest strengths?
I wouldn't understand. My greatest strength is communicating, is communicating. Forty-something years, as Mike alluded to, in his time in ministry as, uh, in communicating to people, understanding what their problems are, what their issues are, to have an ear. You know, we say east end, west end, we need to get away from there. Those are cold words. We need to start going with fair east and fair west, where we'll know. Because, you know, it used to be, it used to be railroad tracks. That was a cold word. You know, why can't we get back to fair east or fair west rather than east end, west end? You know, my greatest strength is communicating, communicating to the people, communicating. There, there's no reason why, there, there's no reason why that resource officers, as we call them, community policing, as we call them, do not know the name of a lot of these youth that are walking around, even if their pants are down to their ankles. There's no reason for that. There, 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 there is no reason that, 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 you know, as far as, you know, communicating to the, to the youth, that somehow or another, that, that, that's just a block. That's just a block. To reach back out to the, to the, to the community that, that I wanna serve and that I wanna save. Thank you.
Thank you. Rasam?
Yes, uh, I have two. Uh, the first one is listening. Um, you have to listen before you can communicate, that's number one. Um, all my life, I have listened to folks from every fountain through the city doing my police work. You know, they have different problems, different issue, different challenges, but it's important that you listen to them, because if you don't, they feel like their voice is not heard, and that's important. You gotta allow people to have a voice. So, my next one is communication, as Mr. Warner was saying. Um, we've gotta give people information, and if we don't give them information, they can't learn, or they can't work, or they can't get things that they need to have. And we don't get those resources out and communicate in the proper way, then things will not happen the way it's supposed to be. So, those are two, I think, greatest attributes of myself, listening and communication.
Thank you. Tana?
Some of my greatest strengths is making a way out of no way. Listening is definitely a part of it, communication is definitely a part of it. Being transparent about who I am, where I came from, and where I'm going, and hopefully, we will go there together. Something else is organizing. I am an organizer to my heart, organizing in the community, grassroots, building relationships. If we, I know, if you haven't seen The Field of Dreams, if you build it, he will come. I totally believe that. So, rebuilding, reorganizing, and getting your attention, that is a great strength that has been in, endowed in me. And I do believe in Holy Spirit, and I do listen, I do meditate. And so, that is the greatest strength, is bringing community together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Michael Wilson?
Thank you. Yes. Um, I have listed on a card that I have, my greatest assets and strengths at this time in my life. I stand forty, seventy-two years old, have been a part of this community all of my life. My relationships with this community and with this people are such that there's a certain credibility that exists. They know Brother Mike, and know that they can trust me. As I sat on the porch with a young lady who lives on Ohio Street, and found out more facts than the police did in four years about the death of the young man, Mr. Snow. And I contacted the chief to let him know that, uh, there was information, that sometimes you're looking in the wrong places for the wrong things. And of course, uh, I'm quite sure before, before July the fourth, we'll probably be able to open the case and some, because of the information of one woman in fifteen minutes sitting on her porch. There's not another person in this room that could have done that. Nobody, nobody enforced it in four years. That's because they trust Brother Mike. That we have, uh, to this time point, a march at, uh, downtown, Martin Luther King March. Uh, when I sat in a meeting and they decided, well, you know, we're gonna continue to have the UK, I said, "If you do, you have one in the UK, we're gonna have one downtown." As a result, we have the march downtown, and of course, was something that I'm always a part of every year, for thirty-seven years. That's leadership. And then, of course, given the fact that when I, my history with government goes back to nineteen seventy-three, as you will see here, I had hair, yes, I did, and, uh, and then, of course, uh, we put together a group of forty-seven people in nineteen seventy-three that went downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
And before we go to our next question, if anybody else, I know some people may have come in, um, after we started, if you do have a question, we're gonna ask you to go over to the table, there are index cards. You can write your questions down, and then we will take those at the end of, of our questions to our candidates. So our next question is gonna be, Mr. Rasam Barry, if you can start us off. What is your most impressive work achievement?
Um, nineteen seventy-three, I was born, so, to have such a mark on my knee, yes, sir. Um, I think, in Douglas Park, we had a shooting, uh, back of a young man, and all the park was eliminated, all activities, nobody came, it was just gone. And one thing I did wanna do was over-police the park. So I had come up with an idea, I prayed about it. So I was like, let's take a negative and put a positive. So that's when I came up with Church in the Park. So I contacted all the ministers around the area and said, "Could you bring your service to the park every Tuesday and Thursday from six-thirty to seven-thirty?" All the churches, mostly in this county, participated. They brought back dirt bowl, we didn't have no more shootings, we didn't have no more problems, and this is real.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, we'll just give a one minute, okay? I'm sorry.
So, it was remarkable. So the next thing, I said, "Let's take it to the next level. Let's get the older folks back in the park. So now, let's bring in jazz in the park. So now, every Thursday from seven-thirty to nine, we have jazz. It is incredible. Last year, we had over three hundred, three hundred fifty people. Partying, just having a good time, people would come, and guess what? I'm the only policeman there. And don't even wear a uniform, because people trust me and they know that it's a safe park now. And that's what it's all about, going out the box and creating new solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Tana?
I would believe I'd have to start with the birth of my children and then move into building coala, coalitions here in Lexington, where we work together to try to fill in and help people fall into the cracks. One of the, um, I guess, outstanding, um, situations is the ban of the No-Knock Warning. Working with, uh, LPD, uh, Police Accountability and the Black Faith Leaders. Also, um, registering so many people to vote, and making sure that people who have come out of jails and prisons, who are working, paying their taxes, have the right to get their vote back. I think that's probably my baby right there, because there are a hundred and seventy thousand Kentuckians, working Kentuckians, forty percent right here in Lexington. Most of them people of color, one out of every four African-Americans cannot vote. I work diligently to make sure that people have their right to vote. People feel like they are a part of the community. See, what I have found out is if you give people a chance to feel a part of the community, they'll stop taking from the community. And voting is one of those fundamental rights. And so, that is a high achievement. And now, Opportunity Village, working with Jenny Ramsey to acquire the Clarion Hotel on Richmond Road that will house a hundred and forty-nine homeless individuals. Been on the phone with her every day this week. Worked diligently to get pastors to sign on, so that we can have the opportunity to acquire that building. So working with the homeless population, working with people who don't have their right to vote, working with people coming out of jails and prison, they put so much money into second chances, then make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Next, um, Michael Wilson?
There's a question, I'm sorry.
What is your most impressive work achievement?
I would be in, I would be in serious error if I did not say to this group that my greatest work achievement has been fifty years, fifty-one as of this year, years of gospel ministry. Fifty-one years of twenty-eight years of pastoring in this community, of taking that particular form ministry to help countless persons in countless situations, to take that form ministry to put, bring together forty-seven people in nineteen seventy-three, to go downtown to come before Mayor Jim Amato at that time, to get sidewalk streets, curbs, and gutters in what is traditionally called Brewstown. You know, at the line for CDBG monies, since, um, what was it, CDBG monies, uh, some Community Development Block grant monies, was, was Elsmer Park, there's a, there's a fence at the end of Elsmer Park. And beyond Elsmer Park, they were not allowing or allocating money for anything. And those three streets down there in Brewstown, we went downtown, forty-seven people in a bus from, um, what was that, um, Methodist church over there on that street? And then got them to assign monies to make sure, we, we look like a historic district, because we didn't have sidewalks, we had bricks, like it was a historic district. But now, we have sidewalks, streets, curbs, gutters, all sorts of public improvement. So, that was my greatest achievement, and it continues to be. And I need to, I want to take that ministry that I took to the Urban County Council in eighty, eighty-three, eighty-five, back to the Urban County Council and get things done. And you can rest assured, I will get things done, because I have the experience to get it done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doyle Warner?
Thank you. When I was precinct captain at the Marlboro, um, Radcliffe Precinct, uh, one of the things that was happening, I lived, uh, white guy lived on Lindwall Drive, and South Ridge and Blue Ridge was flooded, and there were total, uh, four houses in that section. And we had to come, Brother Mike remembers that, we had to come and petition the city council. That you have to do something, because you couldn't drive down through there. And we kept it up and kept it up and ended up getting all those houses removed out of their way that, uh, uh, they could put the right sewer lines down there. Uh, the other thing, I guess, uh, I was one of the first, uh, people that I know of that when candidates was running, they always, used to be, and I'll go back a little ways, in the late eighties would not attend churches. Now, you look up on Sunday when elections going on, you'll see everybody up in there. But I used to call them, uh, Teresa Isaac will tell you today that I am one of the main reasons why she got elected, because I, I took her to all of the rural churches around and here in the city to, 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 she said, because she was of different faith and, uh, so, I said, "You can't leave out the Baptist faith." But, uh, those two things, I guess, kind of stick in my mind, but mainly, the one where we had to get the new sewer lines and everything down on South Ridge and Blue Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, we'll start with, we'll back to you, Tana. So, the, the question is, the mayor's twenty-twenty-three budget has allotted two hundred and seventy-five thousand for seventy-five additional flock license plates reader cameras. What is your stance on the flock cameras in the first district?
Well, according to the mayor the other night, she hasn't spent any money, and, um, I knew that was wrong. Uh, you have to spend money for the folks who installed the cameras, so there's some money spent somewhere. I am totally against those cameras being put up. We are always in surveillance, they have not told us exactly where these cameras are gonna be put. So I hate to assume, but in the low-income marginalized, they continue to say high crime areas. They're gonna, the cameras are already there. So, that's another form of the No-Knock Warning, if you ask me. I don't believe that they will use it for the correct purpose, that they're telling us that they're installing these cameras for. So my vote is dead against these cameras, and when I get into that seat, I'm gonna make the other eleven districts understand the reason why. It's an invasion on prob, it, it's an invasion on your privacy, and it's also just totally making sure that folks who normally get arrested, continue to be arrested. Thus, dividing the family, someone's missing from the table, and children are, are growing up without their parents. It's a tragedy that they even passed that or even thought about it, but that's the system for you. I'm gonna pass this to brother.
Hold on one second, I'm skipping time. Your next.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Let me, let's, let me ask a question relative to your question to us. Uh, is the question correct in that, that you said that the cameras would be put only in the first?
I will repeat the question, okay?
Okay.
The mayor's twenty twenty-three budget has allotted two hundred and seventy-five thousand for seventy-five additional flock license plate reader cameras. What is your stance on, on the flock cameras in the first district?
Very okay. Thank you. What's my comment on that? Um, basically, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it. Because, uh, I think it's okay to have cameras. Too much, we, people in, in East End, on, on Chestnut, et cetera, have been asking for cameras. Um, Officer Barry knows that there have been situations in the past where there have been cameras at Third and Race. Uh, basically, I think the cameras would, would basically, um, cause a, a decrease in crime. The criminals aren't gonna, okay, you can't do that. Okay, you can't, you can't basically, basically criminals are not gonna do something wrong if there's a camera. Uh, basically, you know, it almost leads me to the other situation as to crime in our areas. You gentlemen speak to youth and et cetera. Crime is, crime is all over. And especially in the first district. I've heard a lot of persons talk about overpolicing and this and that and et cetera, whatever. I don't agree with that. I don't think, I don't, I don't agree with that, overpolicing, that is, you know, that, I tell you what's wrong with our police is we have ineffective policing. Just like I'm in the situation when I'm talking about it as far as sitting on the porch and finding out more than the police department has found out in four years about a young man who got killed. You know, I would just say this to all of you in here, once you, once there's some things are revealed. Who is the first person that is thought of to have killed somebody if they have a spouse? The spouse. Let's take a look at her. You know, and I may be giving a lot away, but basically, I, I just had to say that. You know, I, I think that what, there's things that we need to do in our community, community. Uh, our, our police, police are not there to harass, et cetera, what, and you know, that, I know better than anybody after some situations with police, how they can be, and how some of them can be trusted.
Thank you. Mr. Dole.
Thank you. I think we're muddying two issues. You know, flock cameras and crime. The mayor said that the flock cameras would be used to focus on tags along. Landon Hayes, Cornelius Allen, Askey Williams, and Luke Arm. Those names sound familiar? Flock cameras wouldn't, wouldn't have helped him. Flock cameras would not have helped them. Two issues, two issues. Gun violence and the flock cameras are totally different. The flock cameras, if they're used, what the mayor says they're supposed to be used for, that could be a good thing. But what the mayor needs to tell us and what the city needs to tell us is in Fayette East and Fayette West, well, how many are out there? Is there one out there? They could tell us that, there's two out there, or there are two on Nicholas Hill Road? Is there one on the sales road? There's not, I, I'm pretty sure that the community wouldn't have a problem with that. But to say, but to say that, 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 that the flock cameras and the gun violence, they're two different issues. Landon Hayes, who's the youngest victim that got killed back in February second of this year? Flock cameras wouldn't say it to him?
Thank you. Thank you. Rishan?
Uh, first of all, I think.
One second. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I think one important issue is that we should have came to the first district and asked what the people want. That's number one. What is it that we need? What resources that we need to help this? Um, two, we have different opportunities to help our community. You know, what about Neighborhood Watch? People, that's gone away. Why not Neighborhood Watch? Big brother looking at the little brother, little brother looking at the big brother. Why can't we take back our community and help each other when things happen? We can train each other, have street captains, talk about the different issues and challenges that we face and during different situations. Why can't we do those things? We have all sorts of other tools that we can use, we can use lighting. We can do, uh, we can use, uh, extra patrols in different areas to focus on things that are helping our community. We know these things, we have all kinds of tools to help us. The flock cameras are used for an investigative tool, that's what they say, this investigative tool. We don't know where they're at. If she said they was free, I'm gonna take care of those work. That's all I can do is take care of the work. But if we come together as a community and know the resources that we need and we can learn from each other, I think we can make a difference. We don't have to worry about cameras and all this stuff. Why can't we do it ourselves and take out the community and learn from each other? And use the resources that can help each other? That's important. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be answered first by Mr. Michael Wilson. Several members of the current LFUCG City Council believe that Lexington Fayette County is a place for everyone as it is, as it is today. Do you agree with that stance, why or why not? Do you need me to repeat it again, please? Okay. Several members of the current LFUCG City Council believe Lexington Fayette County is a place for everyone as it is today. Do you agree with that stance, why or why not?
I'm, I'm sorry, as it is, as it is, as it is what?
As it is currently.
What is it?
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll repeat it again. Several members of the current LFUCG City Council believe that Lexington Fayette County is a place for everyone as it is today.
For everyone.
Do you agree with that stance, why or why not?
Definitely not, definitely not. Um, given, is that, is that? Oh, okay. Definitely not, um, it's not, it's not, I mean, come on, please. You know, when you have an area like ours that has the lowest in, um, um, the highest rate of employment in the first district and the lowest level of income and et cetera in the first, no, it's not, no, it's not, you know. When a certain, there's a certain plantation mentality that exists in this, in this city as a whole. And then, of course, in some areas, they expect some areas to be a certain way and have certain conditions and other things, South Bay and wherever else, that things are totally different. You know, I, I, I think that for us to think it's all the same, or it's okay, you know, it's like, uh, you, there's certain places you live, et cetera. Yeah, well, we've had some social engineering at that place and surely people live where they want to and et cetera. But no, no, it's not, um, you know, a lot of things need to change. When you talk about the income levels in the city as a whole, uh, the way people are treated in the city as a whole. And, uh, just, just for real quick, I wanna just kinda jump off of what Rishan said. You know, we talk about crime and all that other stuff in our community. It's about us. Sometimes we are the problem. Uh, people of color, uh, just as much as the police and people talk about overpolicing and all that other stuff. We need to take control. We could stop a lot of stuff in our communities if we just come together and like this man is talking about, like, like, uh, 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 what is that?
Neighborhood watch.
Neighborhood watch, yes, I'm, I'm an advocate of that. Because I'm not, and I am not an advocate of, uh, cameras. You know, uh, uh, I have one. We should use, have one if you can afford it. But I'm not gonna pay for nobody else's ring. Cause ring means you gotta pay for their cable bill. My cable bill's a hundred and seventy-three dollars, I'm not paying nobody else's cable bill in this city. You get your own cable, you get your own ring if you can afford it. And a lot of people cannot afford it, I know they're talking about, oh, the police will do this and that and, yeah, prove to me, let, let one of, come down and pay for mine. You won't pay somebody's. So, you know, and, and I'm, I'm serious, we need to realize it's our own dysfunction sometimes.
Mr. Dole. Of course, of course. Okay, several members of the current LFUCG City Council believe that Lexington Fayette County is a place for everyone as it is today. Do you agree with that stance, why or why not?
They, they are poorly misinformed. They are, those seven? They are misinformed.
Yes, sir.
And I know we're probably gonna hit that, but I've got to answer about those seven. When in the month of March, there was only forty-two houses that had a value under two hundred thousand dollars? And, uh, what's they talking about, affordable median housing, housing is two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars? I know I can get into the gentrification, but no, they are, I don't know where they, I don't know where they been for the last two years, if they think that the city of Lexington now is only even killed, no. No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As your councilman, I would bring resources and awareness to the first district. That's what we need. Resources and awareness. As I was the city governor, I worked with all the different departments that is in the government. Forty-four houses, like I told you before, I'm a local landlord. I believe that we can work together and make houses affordable in our neighborhood. See, what it is, is they, they help developers in the neighborhood fix up the houses so you can make them affordable for people to live in. I'm a part of it. Cause I believe in helping people. I believe in giving them the resources that they need so they can live in a affordable area. And also jobs too as well. Uh, we have a plethora of small businesses in our community. It's like I said, Mr. Cunningham back then, he runs a business over Julian Market. Why can't we give them the education and the resources to help them grow so we can support more people in our community? Why not? I know where the resources are downtown to help them do that thing. I know how to navigate through the system to help us become better in District One. Thank you.
Thank you, Rishan. Several members of the current LFUCG City Council believe Lexington Fayette County is a place for everyone as it is today. Do you agree with this stance, why or why not?
I absolutely do not agree with that. When you look at accessibility and the right to choose, when you see families set out their whole life savings, set out on the curb for evictions, when Lexington was given so many millions and millions and millions of dollars and you still have evictions? You've got people freezing on our street. Of course, the news doesn't report that. But you've got homeless population that has grown. You have gun violence that is out of control. And the city council, they don't see us in the first district. That's why they believe that everything is only even killed. If I don't have accessibility to transportation, if I have, if my income, I have to pay more in my rent and my utilities and they're still standing in the food line to try to feed my kids? How in the world could they say that statement? How can you make that statement? How can the city believe that statement? They've got restaurants downtown that I can't even go and sit in. And I make a nice income. But I can't take my family down and enjoy it? There's some places that they've got roped off that I can't even walk in. It used to be places that I played kickball, right there on Sixth Street in Jefferson. There's so many restaurants that are opening that serving poison, in my opinion. Alcohol, accessibility, that's what counts, that's what we need. So I'm the person to make them listen. To be accessible is one of the most valued. Thank you.
Thank you, we're gonna go to our.
I'm gonna beat you.
We're gonna go to our next question. It'll be answered by Mr. Dole first. Um, Mayor Gordon's proposed budget also gives an additional three hundred and seventy-five thousand for one Lexington. What would you like to see with one Lexington that isn't happening now?
Yeah, Mr. Karama, I mean, he's doing a, a remarkable job. I mean, when he first went into position in September of, uh, last year to where he has come down. I mean, with, he, he's doing a phenomenal job. One of the things I think is that, is that we need to, and he's, he's trying to do that, is catch the youth before they get to that point in terms of, 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 of the gun violence and the violence. When I was seventeen, sixteen, I wanted a car. Sixteen-year-olds now, they want a gun. What's wrong with that picture? Four hundred, four hundred million people in the United States and over four hundred million guns? Well, the next generation, phew, they'll be getting them at seven years old. But back to your course. I mean, he's doing, he, I mean, you know, I can't fault him. You know, he, he's, he's, he's doing a good job, the mayor's, mayor's putting the money there. The mayor's calling Mr. Dunn to help him. So I, you know, I think that, you know, if he just stays on the path that he's on now and, uh, uh, with some other, some other, uh, uh, initiatives to help, to help the, the one election, I think we'll, we'll be all right, be all right on that. And, you know, with the mentoring program that's going on, in fact, I'll be joining that, that one hundred men, uh, one hundred men to, to be a mentor.
Thank you. Rishan?
Uh, first of all, I would love to start a community mentoring program in every neighborhood shelter in this city. I think it's important. Uh, our seniors, which have a lot of wisdom and a lot of knowledge, that they can teach our young men and women how to behave, they can do tutoring, they can do different aspects of what they can do. We can train them. I've talked to several folks already up in all the neighborhood associations, they're on board, ready to start this program. I think it would be phenomenal to give those resources and give those people the opportunity and the young folks opportunity to learn from our older folks. And that would be great. The next is mental health services. We've gotta get that money in there. And we've got to help our parents. I don't know how many times a parent has called me and said, my son is out of control, what am I gonna do? Let's start putting some of those resources in our parents as well. Educate them, give them the resources. Cause they're, I mean, they're hurting y'all. They need some help with their kids and they don't know what to do. So let's start focusing on that. Social workers, mental health, help them to get over the top so we can help provide those information and get them the, the resources that they need to help them. So those are the two things to do, community mentoring and parenting caliber to help them with their children as they grow up.
Thank you.
So Divine is doing a phenomenal job, in my opinion. I cannot even critique him. I don't know what he does or what he goes through or what his family life is even about. That he has so much energy to pull into our young people. I would hope, and I, I love standing on my porch. He asked that we stand on our porch, people that live down that Porch Street corridor, to help those students get past to get safely home. And to be out there so that they can see a grown person and ask about their day and let them know that somebody cares about them. He needs more resources. I don't think three hundred and seventy-five thousand is enough. So that he, other mentors can come. Our children are living with trauma. When you have children wake up, prepared to go to school, get on the school bus, but there's yellow tape surrounding or there's a chalk mark of a dead body, that is trauma. So yes, New Vista and places like that should be involved. So Divine knows what his plan should be. He knows the people that he should hire. For me, I would go get those people who have been in prison, that have come back in the community, that is serving the community, and I would put them to work. Because they know the language, they know the path, they know how to put a stop. And to have people listen and share their experience, it's an exchange. That's what, so I can't give Divine Karama or I can't say what else he should do. But I know one thing, I will find all the resources I can as your first district councilwoman to make sure that he has the resources. Let's stop the pipeline to prison. Third grade, too young. Children's prison, that should never happen. Who in the world built the prison for children? Ten years old, they go in now. So he has a lot of work to do and I'm here to help him.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
First, let me say that, um, when, um, Mrs. Hatfield, Lord Hatfield was a part of one of, I was supporting her and, um, her attempted work and tried to bring her through and help her do some things. I'm glad to see that, uh, that Divine Karama is doing what he's doing. The only suggestion I would have for him, and I thank you to the mayor for her insight to try to, um, make sure he had dollars, is that, uh, you do you, and you do what you do. Rishon does what he's gonna do, somebody else does what they do, somebody else, then there are people who individually do what they do. My entire life has been sitting around helping our youth throughout this community. Go to our Facebook page, there's some, some video, once it's totally constructed, you'll see interaction with children as early as Oakwood Park, way back when, in the seventies again, and, uh, in other parks as well. Uh, so that's important, that's, all of that is important, I'm glad that he has those dollars, but, but, let's, let's, I, I, one thing that I found is that sometimes in conversation with him and in every sort of contact, he wasn't very open, receptive to others working with him together. And we have to all work wherever we are, do what we can do. Then, of course, I do want to say that, um, and I had been making notes, and I decided to make something, that when we talk about being able to navigate through the things, as far as this government is, government is concerned, you have to understand that, uh, nobody else, all due respect to my brother and sister, that, uh, nobody else could do that in this room with me, because I've been there, I've been there, I am experienced. And of course, with the situation what you're gonna have, is James Brown's gonna be gone, and then not only is that ever gonna happen, but his, his, uh, what do you call it? Assistant. Uh, 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 Tanya, what is her name?
Tiffany.
Tiffany! She's gonna be gone, she's gonna be gone. So you have, he's gonna be gone, she's gonna be gone.
Mr. Wilson, your time's up. Okay, this question is a little long, so if you can listen, um, closely. Lexington has a housing supply crisis, as rents and home values are rising too rapidly for many to afford the pace of the changes. At the Lexington for Everyone event on April eighteenth, it was shared that there were only forty-two homes available for purchase in the entire city of three-hundred-and-thirty thousand people. The current comprehensive plan that guides Lexington's growth and development has been used in other cities, and they all have similar, similar experiences. Do you think we should continue this plan despite its nationwide record of contributing to displacement of predominantly black communities? Please explain your answer. If I need to repeat that again, and the first person, uh, will answer that is Mr. Rishon Barry.
Uh, first of all, nobody should be displaced from their home, absolutely not. We should use all our resources to help folks continue to stay in their home, that's number one. Um, I think one thing that we need to do is get any developers that want to develop in our area and sit them down, and let them know, how can we make this happen affordable for people in our neighborhood? That's number one, definitely, get them there, let them know what we want as a community, that's important. Because we wanna hold the rich culture that we have, and who we are as a people in our community. So, as we continue to grow and give resources, let them know what we need. And if we don't, then let's just do whatever we wanna do. But everybody has a voice, and they will be heard in our community, and we can continue that. Affordable housing program like she's saying about, we need to tap into that. There's a lot of different resources that help folks, that help folks keep their home, that educate folks so they can have things, uh, where they go along, to continue to have their homes. We need to tap into that, we need to educate folks, let them know what kind of resources that we can, can and cannot do. Like Mr. Wilson said, yeah, he can navigate, but I've been there, I know the departments, I know the people, I know how it works. I've been doing it for the last twenty-five years of my life, and building those relationships, to know how I can get resources, how I can know people, and make things happen in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we should absolutely not continue the plan. People in the first district have been pushed out and priced out of our neighborhood. Our roots have been torn up, and our families have been displaced. If you have not seen the displacement that has taken place in Lexington, you've been sleeping for a very long time. The displacement started, we are in a pandemic, folks. The developers that are coming into our city, developing and receiving the affordable housing money, to develop and not carrying through on their promise to allow poor and marginalized people move back into their homes, it started with Charlotte Court, then it went to the East End. Displacement? People of color have been displaced for quite some time. It is going on, it is real, and for anyone to sit still and think, I heard a young lady in a meeting, she said she made thirteen-fifty an hour, she had two children, and the development that they were talking about, a one and two-bedroom was gonna start at nine, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Who can live like that? The plan is not to help, the plan is to hurt, to push out, and back in the day, where people of money and the city and the town was depleting, they flew to the suburbs. And now downtown is what they call this thriving thing, and they're coming back to the city. Displacement is real, that's why Opportunity Village is about to open. To make sure people have enough time to plan and to sit and to have their family, to keep their family. There's nothing worse than have your family and your children separated from you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Okay. I told a friend, I said, either I'm getting wise or I'm just getting old. And either way, I'm okay with how I feel about some things. Especially as far as this housing, housing affordability, I, I believe that that is a very serious issue in our community, without a doubt. But, uh, I just don't think that everybody wants to live in subsidized house, sectionated housing, et cetera. I think that there are some people out there that are marginal, that want to own a piece of the rock, that want to own their own properties. There were innovative things that the federal government did, maybe I'm still, uh, that was called Two Thirty-two Plan. Uh, it was Two Thirty-six, uh, uh, St. Martin Village, Winburne, uh, Green Acres, et cetera, where people could buy property, and the federal government would assist those persons, so they could buy properties, et cetera. The city needs to be innovating like that, and try to give it people an opportunity, work with some of these lenders, give an opportunity for people to purchase, uh, have land wealth, some of the best programs we have in the city, in the city, nobody ever talks about. Habitat, that was another organization, Heal Housing Equality for All in Lexington, Mr. Stuart Houston, uh, these programs, you know, those people, they have like a fifteen-year mortgage at no interest, and then they come away from those situations, homeowners. You know, I, I, you know, so I have a different, different view about all the craziness as far as housing affordability is concerned, you know, and that's fine, that's fine. There are some people that are gonna need it for the rest of their lives, and that's okay. But then, not everybody wants it for the rest of their lives, so some other things need to be done. You know, and then, of course, and then you might say, I, I live behind Corral Street, eighty percent of, eighty percent of the housing behind me is, is sectionated, owned by Urban League, it's a ghetto. Up and down, uh, Chestnut, uh, after you landlords, ghetto.
And thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you.
What you've done to the least about the neighbors, you have done it to me. Gentrification is going to even destroy the churches. When they come in there and tear those houses, Tom, you're like you're talking about, where are they gonna go? I don't know where they're gonna go. Yeah, we need resources for affordable houses, but there again, who can afford a two-hundred, I can't. A fifty-six thousand dollar house? The highest real estate this past month, I believe, you can fact-check me on it, was zip code four oh five, four oh eight. Four oh five, four oh eight, I mean, you know, it's not, it's not affecting us, right? We're in what, four oh five, what? One, one. Yeah, the city has to do something. The builders are coming in, my mother-in-law, who lives in St. Martin Village, bought one of the nice houses that was built in St. Martin Village in nineteen sixty-four, gets calls every week, wanna sell your home, wanna sell your home, wanna sell your home? If she sells her home at eighty-five, where's she gonna go? You know, they're gonna give her a little money, you know, then they're gonna come in, and then they're going to remodel that house and set it on the market. She paid thirty-two thousand for it back in nineteen sixty-four, and they're gonna put it on the market and sell it for what, a hundred and eighty to two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars? That's my turn.
Thank you.
We're gonna go to the next question, and Tom, you'll have, um, go first on this one. It has been reported that several divisive statements from the current candidates have been made regarding certain groups of people are destroying Lexington. What makes you the candidate who will fully represent all of the first district? And if you need me to, I can repeat that question.
Because are you seeing the current candidates like us?
Um, I'm gonna repeat the question.
Thank you.
It has been reported that several divisive statements from current candidates have been made regarding certain groups of people are destroying Lexington. What makes you the candidate who will fully represent all of the first district?
So what makes me the candidate that will fully represent? Is because if they're talking about a certain group of people, then I am the people. I'm the people for the people, so they're talking about me. Um, fully representing everybody in the first district is finding out about everybody in the first district, what do you need? And that means all the way from affording your, affording to live in your house, all the way down to speed bumps. So as I go out door to door, I'm listening to concerns of everyone that is in the perimeter of the first district. How can I make a difference? I was born a leader. I was born with discipline, I'm gonna be accessible to the people, I'm gonna be accountable for my words, and then I'm gonna let the community help me change those attitudes that are out there, just pointing out certain people who they think is destroying Lexington. Where are they and who are they? So I disagree with that statement, all I can tell you is that I'm gonna be me and I'm gonna work hard. And I come from the section that I believe that they're talking about. So when you're talking about me, and you're talking about them, you're really talking about all of us. How can we make a difference? How can we make the change? It's gonna take all of us, not just me. So, for the people, stand by my word, I am the people, I have the lived experience, and I can take a chicken and make two meals out of it, so that my kids won't starve. That's what I know, I can plan and get it done.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Wilson?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, I want somebody else's mic. I know it was hot, it was like hot, it was not, I'm gonna use that one, that was hot. Okay, alright, um, so, one of the first things that I opened with and wanted you to understand, as I see this diverse crowd of persons, is that we need to initiate and to create the First District Neighborhood Council. A collection of the neighborhood associations throughout the first district, so that we can all come together and collectively talk, and come together, so that, you know, persons as far as New Circle Road, or as far as Broadway and, and East End and back behind, almost up, and the higher, et cetera, so we can all come together and gusting, discuss things together, so that we can come together, because I, I know, I know, as some of this conversation has evolved, there are people who feel left out. We're not all black, we're not all white, we're all not poor, we're all not poor, all not rich. We are one district, and it includes all of them, we are extremely diverse, and we should not want anybody to feel left out, ignored. You know, we have to understand as a community, and that's why sometimes we think we don't get what we get, it's because the squeaky wheel gets the old. We don't come together and squeak enough, so therefore, we don't get some things that other people get. We need to wake up and understand that we need to come together as a community. Uh, and, and if I talk about anything, I talk about some of these developers and the market, and as far as, uh, and, and these people that come in speculating property, and the people that are causing gentrification, you talk about the number of cards you get, whoever said that, I get them, get them every month. And don't be delinquent on your taxes, because you're gonna get them every week, because they think you want to see on the office.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doyle?
Yeah, uh, first district is a very diverse community. I, I mean, there, there's no reason, uh, that, you know, government should be trying to legislate, uh, who to love, or who they think might be, uh, poor, who they might think that is undeserved. That's not, that's not the job, that's not the job of, 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 of the government. The first district is why it is the second-largest district in Lexington. And, and I understand that, you know, you send me down there, that I'll have to reach out to everybody. Just cannot leave out nobody.
Thank you. Thank you, Rishon.
I'm dependable, I'm reliable, I'm credible, that's me. I've been doing it for the last twenty-five years of my life, and I will continue to do it and serve you. Yes, we're diverse. We're beautiful in itself, and we have some of the, like I said, we have the first black neighborhood that I live in that was ever established in the city. We need to focus on that, we need to bring awareness and let them know that we're here, we're number one for a reason, because we're first district. But we can't neglect the fact that we have to work together, we just have to, there's no doubt about that. Now, they might not always see what we need, but we have to make them know what we see, what we need. But that becomes with all of us coming together as a community. I can't do it alone. It has to be each and every person in this first district to come together and go down to council with something that, that we don't need, to say, hey, let's come together and get this thing done. Because you gotta remember, I'm just one vote. But if you come together as one together, then it will make a difference, and that's what makes us unique as a first district.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna go to our next question, and the first person will be, uh, Mr. Michael Wilson. Cities across this country are affected by homelessness, and Lexington is no different. The first district has a share perhaps more than other districts. Most are panhandling, bo- boldly walking up to vehicles demanding money. What is your plan to assist the needs of the homeless and to stop or get a handle on the panhandling?
As far as homelessness, et cetera, you know, I've kinda laid back on some things. Uh, I happen to be the chairperson for the Central Kentucky Housing Homelessness Initiative. So Tanya has alluded to a cou- alluded to it a couple of times through Jenny Ramsey, and in the effort to buy the hotel property to open up, or create a situation to help, as far as homelessness and, and, and homelessness and housing is concerned. So I will do everything that I can as So I will do everything that I can as chair of that organization to continue to try to purchase the property and do what's necessary, uh, to help persons, uh, with that situation. Uh, the city has already initiated a number of things as to, uh, trying to deal with panhandling. They said, we'll give you a job. I think it's, it's a fifty dollars an hour. So I'd rather be getting fifty dollars an hour than panhandling. I mean, the city's got a lot of things that is going on. I will continue to support those situations as well. Then of course, I'll just say this, that, you know, Rashad alluded to it and I will say once again, that our theme for this district is first things first for this district. That we need to realize there are things that we need to do and take care of as a community, not, not somebody else, but people in the First District did come together. And they can come, come together under the umbrella of what I'm proposing and will just keep that, uh, Facebook site, et cetera, open throughout my ten-year-old council. And that is First District Neighborhood Coalition. First things first. We'll get it done. We don't need nobody from Northern District to get it done. We need the votes. They, they say, they vote. But we need, we need us to come together. We don't come together. First things first. First things first. We gotta do it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doyle.
During the pandemic, from about April to May, from about April to May during the pandemic, Lexington was different. There was nobody sitting on New Circle Road, West New Circle Road and going down, uh, uh, the street from, I can't think the name of, but sitting out with signs, holding out signs. It seemed like every person that was homeless during that time, from about April to June during the pandemic was no longer homeless. And I said, how did they do that? How, how, how did that happen? You know, they initiated the vans that in the wintertime, pick, pick them up in the Lexington Catholic. Uh, city does a great job in that too. But, but we gotta do something. You know, I mean, and then, you know, it makes me feel guilty sometime when they keep running up to my car window every weekend. I don't give them a dollar. Then my wife says, I'm just adding it on. But, but we have to do something. I don't have all the answers, but guess what? I can ask you in the First District, what do we need to do to help change some of this homeless that's going on here in New York City? Thank you.
First time.
Yeah, um, one thing that I started to do was that they're like well-oiled machines, our folks in our community. So what I did was I went to some of the local businesses and you see where they advertise their business with the little signs and everything? So I took a couple of them up there and I said, okay, if you wanna sit down here, let's, let's, let's try to get this, let's go on. So this business will pay you to advertise their business. I think that's productive. I think that's thinking out the box. The, the individual man, he loved it. He got paid at the end of the day. He went back the next day. Why not? Those are things we need to do to think out the box to help the problem. The next situation is we talk about homeless and that, that is true. Some of the houses, why can't our neighborhoods buy back those houses and create homes for the homeless to live in their communities? Why can't we think about throwing things like that? Why not? Pour it back into the neighborhood. Pour it back to the neighborhood where they live in because they're gonna stay there. So why can't we help those brothers and sisters that are living on the streets or panhandling to live back in their neighborhoods and be productive? These are the innovative opportunities I think that I can push to help eliminate some of the panhandling in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I would like to do is start with the causes and conditions of someone's life. Why are they panhandling? I think we can open more day treatments across Lexington for people and, and people just, when you lose hope, you just give up. So give people their dignity back. You know, find out what they're interested in. They didn't just wake up one day and say, I'm gonna go out and panhandle because that's what I wanna do. Something happened in their life that took them down a road that they feel that they cannot climb out of. So what do we do? We work with agencies, get with nonprofits, that's what I like to do, and see what nonprofits can add to and come to the table with. It is very important for people to have hope, to have a dream. Some people are just trying to get back to the dream that they started with. So when you start with causes and conditions and you find out the why, then you can start repairing the what, the when, and everything else that goes with that. People just want to be safe. They want to be seen. They want to be heard. And they want to feel complete and whole. That's what I wanna do. Find a solution there. I worked with the Compassionate Caravan with Jenny. I've done that. It's not enough just to give a person a blanket or a dollar. What does it say? Teach a man to fish and he'll eat forever. You give him a fish and that's a temporary solution. So that's what I'd like to do. You've heard some biblical things come out of all of our mouths up here. And there could be a common denominator. But you give me your vote and I'll take it right back to the roots of where it needs to start.
Thank you. Um, at this point, we're actually, um, really moving on time. We're gonna go ahead and start with our Q and A. And what we did for that is we had people when they came in to write questions down. So these are questions from the audience, but I will read their questions and you all will answer. So, um, we're gonna start, I believe that Mr. Michael Wilson had started the, the last question. So Mr. Doyle, we'll start with you for the, and, and remind you for these, we're gonna do one minute so that we can get through them. And then we'll have one last question and after that, we will go with the closing question, okay? Mr. Wilson.
I'm gonna have to leave because I have some health issues that I've been dealing with. And I can stay no longer. I'm sorry. Uh, you will, anybody that had questions, you have my phone number there and you can, it, it was a question, you, you can, uh, call me and I'll, I'll be happy to answer your question. Sorry, I'm so sorry. Anything that you have, Ms. Logan, just call me, please. Thank you. And I'm so sorry, so sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, for being here.
Yeah, sure, sure. Okay, thank you.
You all can give him a hand before he leaves.
No, I'm okay with just your hand. Ain't all that relevant? Praise God. Thank you. Oh, no, no, I'm good. I'm good. I'm, I can do what I need to do. I just, just need to take care of my health. Bless you, bless you. I'm good. Thank you. Thank you. So sorry, so sorry.
Mr. Doyle, can you hand me that microphone?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead. Mr. Doyle, you will answer the question first that I draw from the audience, okay? What solutions do you have for low-income affordable housing?
There's only so much that, that the government can do. When I say government, I guess the fifth county council can do and the mayor. It has to start with the builders. If you've got a four hundred credit score, you're not gonna get no affordable house anyway if it's down to fifty thousand dollars. So there, there's, there's, there's some things in between that we have to do in order to make this affordable housing really affordable. I was at the Lexington and I asked a question, what is an affordable house? They couldn't give a direct answer. As to what an affordable housing actually was. Did I answer your question? Oh, I don't know. Who asked it, so?
Okay, thank you.
Let's try to work with some of those nonprofits who want to help people live in homes, or first-time home builders and home purchases, I believe. And also let's sit down with any developer that tries to come in our area and talk about what type of dwelling that you're gonna build in our community to make it affordable. It's very important that we communicate with that. Because they have to come downtown to know what permits, what they're gonna do, how they're gonna do it. So they have to come through us downtown to know what they're gonna do. So it's very important that we work with the builders and developers to know what's going and what we need that's gonna be affordable for our youth and our, and our young professionals who are gonna be in our area. Also, let's try to educate them as well. Give them the resources that they need. Now, sometimes it's hard to navigate through that. Some of them in college, some, like you said, Mr. Lee's have bad credit scores. But we need to give them the resources to help them improve themselves.
Thank you, Tom.
First of all, I cannot find low-income housing. I know there is a difference between affordability and affordable housing. I know that it takes two incomes to even get near affordable housing. So what do we do? We could try to rely on the housing authority who's trying to build some more units over off of Ranscher near Williams Wells Brown. So we have to go back to the drawing board, like I said at first. Erase everything that's up there. Give minority business owners a chance to make a good bid and build a good house. That's what I would like to see done. You have to change the definition. You cannot keep selling people a dream when it's a desert.
Thank you. We're gonna go to our next question that's come from the audience. How would you handle, how would you handle homelessness? Sorry, Hassan.
Uh, uh, wow, that's a broad question. Um, we had talked about it before. Uh, maybe some of these blighted homes in the different communities, allowing the community to come back and buy some of these homes. And then we can reach out to some of the homeless, homeless folks that are in our areas to have a home to live in. I mean, that's one solution that we could do. Talking to nonprofits and other organizations, trying to see what we can do to have more houses that are stable for them so they can live in. And, you know, having a home is a lot of responsibility too as well. So we've gotta teach them how to take care of their home as well. We gotta teach them how to pay the bills and how to go to work and how to do what they need to do to take care of their property if they get a home. I mean, that's important because they wouldn't have a home if they didn't know how to do that. So we have to start, like Tanya said, from, from scratch and teach them and learn and let, let them have the resources and, and educate them on how to take care of a home.
Thank you, Tom.
So to deal with homelessness, in my opinion, is to house as many people as we can. To give them some education and then wrap around services. You know, it has to include mental health services. It has to include mentoring. It has to include financing and budgeting. It has to, but give them a stable home first. Because you cannot go out and keep a job if you don't have anywhere to come home and take a shower. So to house them in the community, opportunity village, that's, I, I can't say that enough. That is going to be a great resource. And then spread that out throughout Lexington. But in First District, it is going to take, you know, the homeless population is populated in the First District under bridges downtown, uh, at the courthouse. And so when, when facilities like that open, when you give a chance to Miss Door up there at the Blackett Williams. I'll finish it.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle.
Yes, I mean, the city has some programs, uh, you know, the REACH program. I mean, you, you know, you get yourself together a little bit and, you know, you, you know, that program takes two years or better just to go through. Just even qualify for a house. Then once you qualify, then what happens? So, you know, I look into some new ideas as how, you know, as Rashad said, with the nonprofits, as what they can do. It was just a focus said, there's a lot of houses that, that, you know, we have to bring some builders in and, and get some of these folk off the street. We, we, we can do better and we must do better.
And thank you. So we're gonna go to our next question and Tom, you'll answer this one first. What neighborhoods are overpoliced and what other options do you have to help them?
So I have to, I live in the East End. And that is one of the populated areas. And then as I come up Georgetown Street, you know, they drew the lines. If you go across the street, you're in District Two, but you know what? It's all part of First District in my eyesight. The Roosevelt area and all of those areas. The one, the areas that they are denoting as, uh, high crime areas. The traffic stops, they're out of control. I think the police, I know that the police pull folks over on a traffic stop to enhance some other charges. And so our system is broken, you guys. It is totally broken. So back to the drawing board. Bring some community folks in, listen to them, and let's together come up with a new plan.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. And I'm sure she don't mind me saying this. That's a resource right there. Someone is shot or killed in Fayette West or Fayette East. I'm reading my email in a few minutes about it. Because guess what? The news ain't gonna put it on to the next day or maybe the day after. Breathitt, Florence, Fayette West. You, you know, one of the things propelled me to wanna run, me and my five-year-old grandson, I live on DePores, playing out in the yard, somebody driving by, pop, pop, pop. I scoop him up and run inside. There were two homicides on DePores where I live. And like Rashad said, we consider that a good neighborhood. But there is no safe place for crime. No safe place for gun violence.
Thank you, Hassan.
In the end, we need to work together to solve these problems, point blank. We just have to come up with a plan and a solution to work together. Now, I know a lot of people don't like the police and this and that, but we have to bridge that gap. It's important that we do and use our resources. And like I told you before, what's wrong with Neighborhood Watch? What's wrong with our community looking out for each other? Bringing these programs back. We got lighting problems. You know, that scares away even a threat of different solutions. Proper lighting, more resources, more information. Why can't we work together and solve our problems? We can't not be divided anymore. We have to come together to know what we can do and those are the solutions that we can have. Thank you.
Thank you. You might as well stay up because you get the opportunity to answer the next question first. Uh, it's a little the same, so if you wanna expound on your first answer. Can you share ways you view the city's council's role in meeting the rise, demand, rising demand for affordable housing?
Uh, like I said before, I'm a local landlord. So I took it upon myself a long time ago to try to come back to affordable housing. Anybody who stays in my apartments have an opportunity to have at a decent price. That's what it is and that's what it'll always be. I was blessed enough as an early age. My father taught me how to invest back in people. And that's what we need to do. That's how I can show the city government how to invest back in the people. By working together, the different options, how I created this atmosphere of trust. How I created, how they can make houses affordable for people. That's what I've done. And I will continue to do that. That's what I've done and I will continue to do that. Those are the opportunities that people need so they can live in prosperous neighborhoods just like we hope. We can do this together. Thank you.
Thank you. So what we're, oh, I'm sorry. Did you hear?
I don't know.
So you, you already answered that one, so.
I think so. Yeah, cuz I'm a person.
Okay. So what we're gonna do, uh, for this question, you already answered that, this round, is that, or do you wanna expand on your answer, Tom?
Um, I was just going to add that it takes at least eight other votes on council. So my position is I have to convince eight other folks to see the First District and to help move the needle. I wanted to say that I know that the Sheriff's Department has implemented a program where they are putting in Ring cameras for the elderly people and people in the neighborhood. So if we got the Ring cameras and we've got cameras in the stoplights, I'm going back to that horrible idea that we need to over-police through another camera. And so I wanted to expand on that. So it's, it's gonna take the community, it's gonna take change in times when council meets so community can come and be represented. All decisions are made and the folks in that district have no say because of those.
Thank you. And Mr. Doyle, I'm gonna end it here for that question, for the, uh, to expand on the housing.
Uh, yes, I mean, you know, there is, Communication Department of the city does not let the community know, you know, what happens, a lot of time it's after the fact, you know, when, uh, issues happen, uh, happen is after the fact, it's always after the fact. They need to be just a little bit more transparent, you know, and that's one of the things that I've told, uh, every, uh, everybody that, that I've been on the campaign trail, you know, when I go downtown, sure enough, I will have an eight or two eights or whatever, but there, there will be my personal cell phone that you can call me, my personal cell phone that you can call me, that, whereas if we may be able to, uh, get to answer you.
Thank you. Okay, before we go into the closing question, and, um, I'm gonna ask one last question before the closing remarks for each of you all, okay? And so, um, that, we're gonna start with, um, Tom. And so what is one key takeaway you would like each attendee to walk away with tonight?
So I think the closing question would make two.
No, this is not the closing, this is the, just the last question before, before.
Before the closing?
Yes.
Okay. I am so sorry.
That's okay.
Can you please restate that question?
I will. What is the one key takeaway you would like each attendee to walk away with tonight? You have one minute.
The one key takeaway I would like for each one of you all to walk away with is that once you vote and you vote the number three slot, which that's where my name is, that you will be able to ex, have accessibility to me, that we can grow this thing together. We're in this together, that I am the people for the people. One key takeaway is that it's gonna take some hard work and if I can count on you, you certainly can count on me. That's a key takeaway. And I am so glad you could have been anywhere tonight, but you chose to come here. And I am humbled and honored that you came here to listen to us as we try to represent you in the First District.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle.
Violence, 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 gun violence, gun violence, gun violence. There should be no reason that anybody that lives in the First District should not be able to enjoy their home. And we can't keep doing the same old, same old, same old, cuz they're gonna get the same results. Sit me down there and we're gonna make a change. Thank you.
First time.
Allow me to be your voice. I'm flexible, dependable, credible. I'm here for you. For the last 25 years, like I said before, I have served you tirelessly, every single day and night, trying to solve problems and be there for you. We have to come together and know the solutions that we need to make them work. I will dedicate the next two, three, four, six, whatever you like me to be, yours, your councilman, to the end of time till it has to, to fight those problems for you. I will continue on being your eyes, your ears, your mouth, everything that you need so that you can understand what's going on downtown. Allow me to be your voice. I need your vote. I want your support. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna have, uh, closing remarks and I know, I believe that Mr. Wilson had won the draw for that, so we're just gonna go to the person that was next to him. So Mr. Doyle, you'll go first and you'll have closing remarks, one minute to answer or to state your closing remarks for the evening.
There, there, there ought to be somebody downtown that does not mind when issues come up, that they would not show their face and be involved. I was told, don't go to the protest downtown, don't go to the protest, yes. If there's an issue that is happening in the First District and I'm your First District Council, I'm gonna be there, show you the show. Why shouldn't I? That's what you sent me down there for. Folks, we have got to come together and be a more cohesive community. I ask for your vote on May 17th, 2022. You go to my website, worldforfirst.com. It's time for a change.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Rasim.
Uh, first of all, thank you Lex Travelers for having us. Thank you Deborah, thank you Connie, uh, it's truly been a blessing to be here. Um, as you can see, all three of us, all four of us tonight are passionate about our community and I respect that. Um, I don't think you would go wrong with any other candidates that's here tonight. They wouldn't have done it if they didn't care about our community. I mean, who takes the time to do that? It's not about the money, it's not about anything else, but let me tell you what it's about though. It's about the people. That's what it's all about when it points back to it. When they talk about different funds and different opportunities, it's about giving the people the resources and educating them on how to make their lives better. That's what it's all about. It's about the people. Allow me to be your voice. Like I said, I'm number two on the ballot. So when you go in there, punch that Rasim Berry button. Thank you and God bless.
Miss Tom, how do you ask community to be a part of it and engage in community that is heartbreaking without work, walking every day without a work in heart as you see your neighborhood disappear? We have got to come together and put a stop to it, improve what we have, start at point A where we are and try to redo this thing. So, hold on, change is coming. Hold on, don't you worry about a thing. Number three on the ballot, Tom Fogel, your next city councilwoman, to represent you and to be that voice. I am the lived experience, I am the people for the people, all around New Circle Road, through Castlewood, East End, West End, Oakwood, I'm that person.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, at this time, we would just like if everyone could join me in just thanking our candidates for being here. Um, so we thank you all. In my closing, um, I just wanna thank a few people. First of all, we, we wanna thank you all for coming out, taking your time to come out. Uh, we also wanna thank, uh, the Lex Travelers advertisers and the Lex Travelers, our founder here, Mr. Deborah Watson, for hosting this wonderful event. Um, and also, we would not, we would not wanna leave out the Bluegrass Community Technical College for allowing us to host this event here. So we thank you all for allowing us to host this event. And, um, again, we just thank you all, we thank the candidates, we wish all of you all the best, and we ask you all to be safe as you travel home. Thank you again.